We appreciate your patience with some technical issues. And at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Ms. Lynn Somerville from the Association of Governing Boards. Lynn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Sher Warner mentioned, the Association of Governing Boards has been engaged by LSU to conduct a study of the university's organization and leadership structure. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, Dr. Carol Cartwright, Mr. Rich Novak, and Mr. George Kernsteiner, and we're delighted to be with you this afternoon. As Sher Warner also mentioned, AGB has worked with LSU in 2006 and 2013 to conduct assessments of the leadership structure. And we're building on that work with our presentation to you today. Over the last two months, the AGB team has interviewed over 100 people associated with Louisiana State University. The issue of leadership structure was central to each of our conversations with these individuals. The AGB team conducted these interviews both individually and in group meetings, in person and via telephone. In early March, we traveled to Baton Rouge to conduct in-person meetings. And I know we met with several of you while we were there. And then throughout the remainder of March and early April, we conducted meetings and interviews remotely as COVID-19 disrupted the planned visit that we had to Shreveport to conduct some in-person meetings. Over the course of those two months, we conducted interviews with members of the Board of Supervisors, administrators of the university, and its research centers and health science centers, with faculty members, staff members, and students, and also with affiliated foundation leaders and donors. We want to thank everyone who participated in these interviews for their time and their valuable insight. The AGB team also interviewed current and former leaders of other university systems and flagship institutions with similarities to Louisiana State University. And these interviews were conducted to give us insight into the various leadership structures of those systems and institutions, to find out what works well for them and how that leadership structure contributes to their success. With that brief overview of our process, I wanted to turn it over to my colleague, George Kernsteiner, to share what we learned over the course of those interviews. George? George, I think you may be muted.
Thank you to the host for unmuting me. Zoom is now our means of communication. And so I thank those of you who are enabling us actually to continue to work with one another, even in these difficult times. We thought it appropriate to have a little bit of a note about COVID-19. As Lynn described, we began this process and we began our work with you in person, in Baton Rouge, two months ago. And we were able at that time to interview many of you. We knew at that time that there was a coronavirus, but we had not really a full understanding of what the impact of that would mean with regard to the health and lives of the people, both in Louisiana and in other parts of the country. So we were a bit naive at that point about what was in store for us as we went forward. Those interviews, at that time, in Baton Rouge yielded a lot of information. But interestingly, the interviews that we had by telephone over the course of the next month or more yielded the same kinds of information. In other words, people that we talked with, those who are affiliated with Louisiana State University, focused on what the university was, had been doing, and could be, and were not influenced unduly by what was going on with regard to COVID-19. They focused entirely on, this is our university, and we want to make it the best that it can be for the future of Louisiana. We know that COVID-19 will affect state appropriations, may affect student enrollment, and therefore tuition income, and has already affected the methods of operation of Louisiana State. I suspect it will continue to affect those methods of operation for at least the next few months. We know that. But the fact that all of the interviews that we conducted suggested the very same kinds of issues, observations, and suggestions tells us that the kinds of options which you will be considering and the context in which you will consider them will remain the same regardless of COVID-19. But the timing of the actions that you take regarding structure or the recruitment of a president may be affected in the short term by COVID-19. We were asked to look at whether or not the current structure works. The current structure combines the presidency of the university with the head of the campus in Baton Rouge, the A&amp;M campus. And when we talked with folks, we came to the conclusion, well, maybe it does. There's a greater sense of Louisiana State University identity, common identity statewide. The foundations, you have many foundations. They are working together well for the very first time. There are more shared services now than had been the case in 2013. Streamlining of processes occurred in 2013 and has continued. And there's less conflict between the A&amp;M campus and the president's office than apparently prevailed under the former structure. And undeniably, LSU has enjoyed significant student success, both in terms of enrollment, in terms of equity, in terms of graduation. All of the elements of student success have been improved over the last several years. But the question remains, does the combined structure work? So maybe it does, but then again, maybe not. Many on the A&amp;M campus believe that they need a visible leader who is dedicated to and identifiable with that campus. The other campuses, interestingly, believe that the president, because that president also heads the A&amp;M campus, may be more favorably disposed towards A&amp;M than towards them. And so they have questions about the current structure. And there are those who believe that the president's job may either be too big for one person or perhaps more pertinently, may have inherent conflicts within it related to overall leadership for the university and leadership for the campus that may in fact militate against success. So does the current combined structure work? Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. But what many people told us is there are other things that we need to be thinking about in addition to structure. There were a lot of folks who told us that it's really too soon to tell whether the combined structure works or not. It's too soon to tell because we've had just one incumbent in that role. And is it possible to disentangle both the successes and lack of successes of that incumbent with the successes and lack of successes of the structure? Can we really tell? The second thing that we heard over and over again is that research, collaborative research, has not been prioritized highly under the current arrangement. And that has caused a great deal of consternation among faculty, among administrators, and even among some of the other people with whom we spoke. There are questions about the transparency of finances and of budget allocations. Those questions do not arise from people who are involved in those processes. Regardless of where they are in the system, whether they are at the university-wide level or an individual campus level, those people who write the budgets understand them. However, those people who are affected by the budgets do not appear to understand how those budgets are developed. And finally, we heard that the strategic plan for LSU is more a plan for the A&amp;M campus in Baton Rouge than it is a plan for the entire university, so that the other elements of the university have trouble figuring out where they fit within the overall strategy of LSU. So as we look then at the issues that were raised in the interviews, and as you look then at the options which we will be providing you in a few minutes, we're suggesting that you take a step back first and consider some principles and some best practices that Rich Novak will now outline. Rich? The handoff is a little difficult when we're trying to figure out the muting, I think. Is Rich there?
I'm waiting to hear. I think, can you hear me now? Very good. Nice to be with you again, even though by Zoom. Madam Chairman, the rest of members of the board, I hope you're all doing well. We believe that the Board of Supervisors would be well-served by having a set of principles and best practices to guide its work as it determines its administrative structure going forward. So we took the opportunity to suggest a set of principles and a set of best practices, which I will run through now. None of them very dramatic, I don't think. Some of them come from the practices or the literature of the Association of Governing Boards, and some of them from us as consultants over the years and as students of governance for several decades. So if we look at the principles on page or on Slide 7, some of these will directly affect the work of the board as it considers whether or not the university is a single university or a university system, and as a consequence, what it's supposed to achieve, and also the administrative structure that you will determine. Let me run through these quickly. The first, keep in mind the primary stakeholders. It goes without saying that the citizens of Louisiana benefit most from the successful programs, the educational programs, the research programs, and the many services that LSU provides. But as it considers administrative structure as it moves forward, the supervisors need to, one, promise that there will be no diminishment of LSU's capacity to meet the needs of the state and its citizens. And, two, the board needs to be cognizant that no matter what decision it reaches, how that decision is communicated, will either build or erode trust in the collective and collective pride in LSU. The second principle, encourage a mindset that the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. A term that actually is attributed to Aristotle. Regardless of the administrative structure and whether LSU is deemed a system or a single university, the Board of Supervisors needs to encourage continued progress in making LSU's entities less siloed. The whole is greater than the sum also communicates that a synergy exists among LSU's campuses and centers, despite their very disparate missions, that they complement each other's strengths and can accomplish much more working together than competing or working in isolation. The third principle, ensure the independence of the board. The independence of the Board of Supervisors, I believe, is guaranteed in the Louisiana Constitution. All governing boards in all states need to maintain their independent policymaking authority from any outsized influence or influenced by external or internal stakeholders, be they political leaders, appointing authorities, donors, and even students, faculty, and staff. For sure, the input of these stakeholders and staff should be sought. Boards need to get as many opinions and different viewpoints as they can get before they make a decision. But always, the final decision rests with the board. This is very similar, by the way, to a Saks accrediting standard that applies to all governing boards in the Southern region. Next principle, understand that people matter more than structure. What has long been observed across the nation for higher education is true in Louisiana and true for LSU, and that is this. No administrative structure can guarantee desired results. Although an administrative structure with conflicting or overlapping responsibilities can negatively affect performance and even lead to dysfunction, good leaders, working in good faith for common purposes with clear goals and clear accountability expectations, can be successful within any reasonable structure. The next principle, unite behind the final decision or unite behind the ultimate decision. Whatever the final decision regarding the leadership structure of LSU, all members of the Board of Supervisors must unite behind that decision and not undermine it overtly or inadvertently through comments to the press or to LSU stakeholders. The board chair, unless someone else is designated, should be the sole voice to discuss the board's decision. Next principle, ensure absolute clarity between the responsibilities of the president and those of the chancellors and other entity heads. The board needs to make clear that chancellors and center heads report directly to the president and are evaluated by the president. The board must make it understood that N runs by chancellors around the president to the board, to elected officials, or to the media will not be tolerated. This requires a level of self-discipline by everyone, including board members, to enable any adopted administrative structure to work successfully. Now to the best practices on Slide 8. Again, these are more universal and applicable to all governing boards, but we try to put them in an LSU context to complement the principles and so that they might help guide the board as an engaged fiduciary of LSU. The first, have clear expectations for the president, support him or her, and hold him or her accountable. The Board of Supervisors must support the president as head of the university. And I think the best way to do this is to develop an annual set of written mutually agreed upon goals and expectations, jointly developed by the supervisors and the president, defining what the board expects of the president and what the president expects of the board. We believe doing so would help clarify accountability and certainly help during annual performance evaluations. Second, best practice, no one supports the work of all campuses and all major entities and their executive leaders. The board, again, needs to invest and delegate authority to the president of LSU. But board members should be encouraged to get to know each chancellor and each center head, including those not in their geographical region, and be reasonably knowledgeable about that campus, about its student body, about its services, its research capacity, its student characteristics, and anything about that campus or center that is of relevance to the university. Rotating board meetings around campuses and around the health science centers and Pennington could help facilitate this understanding. Next, initiate and support strategic planning. As George noted, we heard a lot about strategic planning in the interviews. Sometime after a new president is selected, the board should charge him or her with developing a new LSU strategic plan through an inclusive, comprehensive planning process. The board should show an appropriate level of engagement with and oversight of the process to ensure that there is stakeholder buy-in and that the resulting plan serves as a guide for the alignment and development of individual plans for each unit of LSU. Next, resist any inclination or temptation to get involved in day-to-day operations. Policymaking and administration are never as distinct as many of us who study governance would like. Nevertheless, the members of the Board of Supervisors must refrain from intruding into management decisions that are the responsibility of the president, or the chancellors, or the other administrative heads. This might mean taking a look at board bylaws and board policies to see whether there's a proper balance between decisions the board delegates to the administration on the one hand, but reserves to itself on the other. The next principle, best practice, excuse me, is to encourage and incentivize innovation and collaboration. We believe that the board ought to consider, holding back, despite these difficult fiscal times, holding back a small portion of the LSU budget every year, every fiscal year, to provide grants to faculty, be that for research, for collaboration, for teaching. Many institutions, many systems do not do this, but these kinds of seed grants can go a long way into energizing faculty and lead to new discoveries, and most of all, lead to probably more additional external funding. The last two I'll go through quickly, embrace board education and orientation. The supervisors should commit to orienting new members and to the continuing education of all members. Orientation and education should cover fiduciary responsibilities and an understanding of higher education generally. And I would say, in addition to special meetings to do that, you could have an orientation to an issue at every single board meeting. Maybe it's just 20 minutes about an issue that there's no imminent decision to be made, but by which educating the board will serve the board in a very good way down the line. Lastly, assess the board's performance each year. Saks Accrediting Guidelines states that boards should regularly evaluate their responsibilities. But we think the supervisors could go further by creating a positive board culture, one that would be sustained as new members enter the board and others rotate off the board. The board could do this through an annual retreat. If open meeting laws allow it, perhaps in private, the president should always be a participant. And if a governance committee, I know the governance committee is not one of the committees in the LSU board, but you could consider a governance committee to do the planning for those retreats, as well as for the orientation and education programs. Thank you, Carol. I will turn it over to you.
Thanks very much. I think I'm unmuted and ready. Madam Chair, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. I look forward to sharing the options with you. First, we want to note that, as was mentioned earlier, leadership really matters. The structure can impede sometimes, but in the main, structure helps define and ensure that good leaders can get on with the business and expectations that you have set for them. There is a recurring question here, and we'll come back to this at the end of the options. And I think you'll see how this is threaded through the options. The questions are posed here. Is Louisiana State University a single university that's providing its business and services in many locations, united, of course, by the board and so forth? Or is Louisiana State University a system of eight campuses, each of them focused on being the best at fulfilling their mission? Of course, led by a president and overseen by a Board of Supervisors. We'll come back to this question frequently as we wrap up. Before I describe the five options, which I'll get to in just a minute, our team believes that there are some actions that apply to all of them that the board should consider. And you see them here. We recommend a search for the president that engages faculty, staff, and students from all eight of the campuses. And we recommend that this be a national search. As noted before, and as you will hear frequently as we move through these options, it's very important that the board set clear expectations for the president, regardless of option. Finally, or next, provide greater transparency regarding resource allocation and the budget development processes. George noted that those directly involved understand these, but most others do not. Next, the board should be firm in stating that the efficiencies that have been accomplished under the current structure must be continued. And we advise that this be explicit and public. And then finally, regardless of the resources, we believe that the board should ensure that there are staff in the president's office who have a leadership role in collaborative research. In addition, I think it's very important to note one thing that we heard repeatedly, and that is, don't return to the old way. We heard that many times in the interviews. So it's incumbent upon the board to ensure that old battle lines are not redrawn and that old bureaucratic processes are not reinstated. Now let me move on and describe the options. And as I do, I'll briefly note the advantages and disadvantages of each of them. Option one is to maintain the current structure. With this choice, there would be no structural changes and no changes in procedures or resource allocations. On the positive side, there has only been one incumbent in the structure, and this option gives you more time to test the effectiveness of what is still a relatively new structure. As noted earlier, some of those interviewed think it's not possible to separate the specific leadership of the one incumbent from the advantages and disadvantages of the structure itself. A second president in the same structure would allow you to test it out more thoroughly. Other advantages include less disruption, a smooth transition to a new leader, and the opportunity to sustain the momentum around student success. And of course, it's obvious that there's no additional cost with this option. On the other hand, the option does not address the perceptions that the A&amp;M campus feels abandoned without its own chancellor, or that the other campuses believe that the A&amp;M campus is unduly favored by a president who has responsibility for that A&amp;M campus. And finally, this option does not provide the resources that many view as necessary for areas such as research, deferred maintenance, and IT investments. And it doesn't provide for additional staff in the president's office to support those areas that need additional attention. Selecting this choice means that expectations for the new president would need to be achieved without new staffing or resources, and that the continuation of the efficiencies gained thus far would need to be continued without new staffing or resources. So this is the no change, the status quo option. Option two, maintain the current structure, but add resources for leadership, especially for collaboration and other critical functions. This, as you see, is essentially option one with the addition of investments for staffing and resources within the president's office to invigorate collaboration and research and enhance other functions, such as shared services and online education. We should emphasize that this question of additional resources is especially true for research, where we found clear dissatisfaction with what is viewed as stagnation in research funding and a lack of aggressively pursuing research opportunities and funding, especially collaborative opportunities. In addition to leadership for research within the president's office, some of those interviewed recommended a chief operating officer, a COO position, to free the president from day-to-day responsibilities and allow the president to focus more on the highest priority goals and especially on external relations. This option has the same benefit as option one in that there is little disruption, and it adds the benefit of a more effective focus on research and other targeted investments. And it also addresses the concern that the president, without additional staffing, which was the case in option one, may be spread too thin. But it has the same disadvantages as option one, and it would require additional resources. If this option is chosen, the board should be responsible for determining the priorities and goals of the university in terms of what you are expecting from your new investments. You would also need to address the senior-level staffing issues. For example, do you see a senior leader, such as an executive vice president for health sciences, to address the issue of research collaboration in the health sciences? And/or do you believe you need a COO position? These decisions could wait until you appoint a new president, and then you could work with that president to make these determinations. But these are clearly issues that the board should be involved in. And in these instances, the board should be very clear about expectations and reporting relationships. Those are critical. Next, we move to option three. And here, the option is maintain the current structure and invigorate the provost position at the A&amp;M campus. This is the model that's used by several flagship institutions that have a combined structure such as yours. In this option, the provost of the flagship campus becomes an officer of the university and part of the president's cabinet. and part of the president's cabinet, as are the chancellors of the other campuses. Now, we've used provost in this title because that is what is used in the flagships that use this model. But we want to emphasize that this is a very different position from your current position of executive vice president and provost. This new provost position would be the head of the A and M campus and would be responsible for all direct academic functions, education, research, public service, the well-being of faculty and staff and students, for example. And then this provost would have the same university-wide duties as the other chancellors of the other campuses, but would not have those university-wide duties that are present in your executive vice president and provost position. The president in this model becomes the visible, external-facing executive responsible for fundraising, legislative and government relations, and intercollegiate athletics. The advantage here in this option is that there would be a clear leader devoted to the academic interests of the A and M campus. This option would require that a new and different position be established in the president's office for leadership of academic affairs throughout the university. An obvious disadvantage is that this would require additional resources to fund such a position. And the president would need to ensure that academic planning and program approvals for the entire university are managed effectively. This option does not specifically address the issue regarding the need for new investments in collaborative research, but it does not prevent the board from making such additional investments either. Choosing this option means that the board must be very, very clear about the responsibilities of the president, of the A and M provost, and of that new academic leader in the president's office. It's also important to ensure clarity around reporting relationship. And in our view, with this option, the provost reports to the president and is evaluated by the president. Moving on to option four, which is to establish a chancellor position, reporting to the president to lead the A and M campus. Reinstating the chancellor position for the A and M campus clearly addresses the issue of operational leadership for that campus. But to ensure that the issues that characterized that relationship earlier do not reemerge, it would be important for the board to define clearly the responsibilities of the president and the responsibilities of the chancellor, and to carefully delineate the working relationship between them. This option has the advantage of a clear and visible leader for the A and M campus and a voice for that campus at the university level that is not conflated with the voice of the university president. On the other hand, there would be increased costs to reestablish the chancellor position. And as occurred before, there is the possibility of conflict between two highly visible executives in the system. This option does not address the issue about more investment in collaborative research, and it could derail some of the progress in shared services and other streamlined procedures that have been developed with your current model. So it would be incumbent upon the board to ensure, again, clarity of responsibilities and also to ensure that expectations for the president and the chancellor do not overlap. And the board would be accountable for ensuring that these individuals fulfill their responsibilities in the manner that the board has determined is appropriate. And then finally, option five. Option five is to establish the chancellor position to lead the A and M campus and to add resources to the president's office for leadership for research and other areas. As you see, this is essentially option four with the addition of staffing and resources in the president's office to address the concerns about collaborative research and other critical functions. It has the same advantages as option four and the added benefit of providing that leadership for research and other collaborative ventures. And it has the same shortcomings as option four, along with even more added cost. As before, the board would need to clearly define the responsibilities of the president and the chancellor and determine the reporting and working relationship. And the president, with the full and explicit support of the board, must define the responsibilities and authority for any new positions created in the president's office. So we come now full circle to that recurring fundamental question. Because I think you can see that options one through three maintain the current integrated structure, albeit in different ways. And options four and five move away from that concept of one LSU and signal the establishment of a system for the university. George is going to now take the presentation into some summary considerations. George?
Thank you, Carol, very much. As as Carol indicated, the recurring question about whether you view Louisiana State University as a single university or as a system of institutions that are connected is one that kind of will help you determine the appropriate structure as you move forward. It is likely that right now, what you have is a little bit of both. And that is really, in part, because as you entered into the new structure in 2013, you began to make some changes, but you have not yet made all of the changes that might have been anticipated at that time to essentially establish LSU as a single university. So you're now at a point where you can either continue that approach or you can look at LSU as a system. If you look at LSU as a single university, it would have a strong president, a unified strategy, and the Baton Rouge campus could be led either by the president or by a strong provost. If, on the other hand, you view LSU as a system, the president would lead that system and orchestrate its efforts. But each entity, including the A and M campus in Baton Rouge, would have its own leader or chancellor. So in terms of where do you slot a chancellor, it's within a system. But to be true to what we were told over and over by people, when the time is right, the board also should consider making other investments in president's office staff and in research funding for collaborative research. But regardless of structure, what you need is a clear purpose for the university. What are you trying to achieve? Clear roles and responsibilities for the leaders, not just the president and the chancellors, but the provosts, the vice presidents, and all of the other senior executives. What is it that you expect them to do? What are their roles and responsibilities? How do you ensure that they don't overlap and conflict? Because structure can get in the way of success if not defined correctly. And finally, how do you encourage and prioritize collaborative research across all of LSU's entities? Whether or not you are a single university or whether you are a system, you still have eight entities, many of which are engaged in important research that can advance both knowledge and the economy of Louisiana and the country. So therefore, we believe that it's appropriate that you consider collaborative research across all these entities as you consider the structure. And with that, Madam Chair, I would turn it back to you for whatever questions that you or the other members of the Board of Supervisors might have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to thank all of you, the team from AGB, Rich, George, Lynn, Carol, who have worked so diligently with us. We've had obviously some issues that got thrown our way for various reasons. And it's been quite an experience to have to do this, the second part of this entire exercise, all through Zoom and video. And I want to thank the AGB team. I especially want to thank, before we go into our questions, all those who took time to sit with our researchers and with the group asking the questions from supervisors and administration, as well as stakeholders across the state. It showed, and it heartened me, that the devotion and consideration and seriousness with which everyone takes this issue and everyone who was willing to give of their time to help us find the answer to these questions and design the best path forward for LSU, the university we all hold so dear. So thank you all for the work and the participation in this process. At this time, we will allow each board member to ask questions. And I'm going to start with the leadership team and then work through the questions alphabetically down the board. So with that, I will open the floor to the chair-elect, Mr. Robert Dampf, to ask the first question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thanks to everybody on the team. You've given us a lot to think about, and and we're seeing it, you know, last day or so today. And so there's a lot to think about it. So I'm sure it will be an ongoing process. Your fundamental, are we a single university or eight institutions? I'm not certain that I'm completely on board with that. I don't, I'm not quite sure I understand why it's an either-or and why why it's not both. And I don't know that those things are necessarily mutually inconsistent. I just need, I need to think about that. And I would like to hear a comment or two, kind of help me clarify my thinking. I'm not sure who, to whom that question's directed, Madam Chair.
Throw that back to AGB.
Yes.
Is that Rich, George? I'm not sure who wants to take that one.
There you go. I'll start. I'll start.
Okay, thank you, George.
There's a bit of a handoff here as whoever the host may be unmutes us. And so I apologize for the for the delay. The chair did warn us in the beginning that there was going to be a delay for those handoffs. You're right in one way, Supervisor Dampf. The distinction is not necessarily totally exclusive. But it's important, I think, and we we struggled with this over the course of the last couple of months to try to figure out how to present this in a way that would be clear. And so the clarity of having it shown as two distinct alternatives may mean that if there's, there are more, it may show more conflict than than there really might be. The point here, though, really is, if you are a single university, you would have a single unified strategy. In other words, you as supervisors, along with the presidents and the chancellors and others, would develop an overall strategic plan and strategy. And it would be one unified strategy towards certain ends. And the president would be charged with executing on that strategy. The important thing there is to show sort of the primacy of the president as the leader of the university and the university as one entity that is trying to achieve one set of mutually reinforcing goals. On a system side, what you have is each of the entities trying to do the best it can do within its sphere. And then the role of the president is to try to orchestrate them towards an overall end that you as supervisors and the president and the chancellors would set as part of a strategic plan. The, yes, there's, there's an awful lot of overlap in the words I just used. The distinction more is, is there a unified strategy executed by an executive who is in charge? Or is there a complementary strategy orchestrated by that executive? And that's the way I might characterize it. I don't know. Rich and Carol may have different characterizations.
Yeah, I see it as, George is absolutely right. I also, from the interviews, and I was part of the 2012 AGB team that that looked at the structure back in back at that time, there are many people who still want to pursue the one LSU initiative. That's obvious in the interviews that we spoke with. But there's a feeling that that is either stalled out or never reached its full potential. And I think what we're saying here is, if you keep the combined single position as you have it now, there's no reason why you should not continue to pursue one LSU, which might mean common course numbering, it might be ease of transfer, even beyond what the Board of Regents has recommended. It might mean more integration of online learning, more integration of of faculty academic departments. Things that could happen as a system, but I think that the individuals we spoke to, and our feeling is, those would have more urgency, more cachet if it was done under a single university rather than under a system of differentiated institutions.
I can weigh in from personal experience. I spent many, many years at Penn State University, which is one university with campuses throughout the whole Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And it was clear that if it was a Penn State course in one of the eastern campuses, it was exactly the same as the course in one of the western campuses. Everything transferred, everything was labeled consistently. People thought of the institution statewide as one institution. I also spent many years at the University of California, which of the campuses really has its own personality and a lot of autonomy to pursue a mission. You sometimes don't even think about UCLA and Berkeley as being a part of a system because they have such distinction as their own institutions. And yet, the the system does many things that build on their scale and scope, such as benefits and research support, for example. So there are differences in the in the way it gets operationalized as well as those that George described as sort of the essence of the difference.
Thank you. We'll now move to Supervisor James Williams. Mr. Williams, do you have a question?
I I do. Thank you. So, and and this may be along the same lines, but on page, I guess, four of the slide, about how the the current combined structure works, you said maybe it works because it has a greater sense of LSU identity statewide. You know, given the fact that I purposely wore my you know, given the fact that these different, just start with the campuses, put aside the Penningtons and the Health Science Centers. But, you know, the LSU Shreveport, very distinct, you know, distinct mascot, Alexandria, or the Generals, you know, these institutes have, and the mascot's more of an example, but they do have distinct benefits in those communities. They sort of independently, I think the fact that the strategic plan that we all spend so much time on being just for the A and M campuses, I think the fact that, I think it might have been you, Ms. Cartwright, when you said that the foundations are working together for the first time. Whenever we talk about that, we're talking about the fact that the A and M campus foundations are working, you know, together for the first time. TAF and the Alumni Association and the LSU Foundation. I don't know that we have, you know, some of some of the sort of the benefits that we are characterizing seem to be benefits to that one campus. And it's a, look, it's a fantastic campus, it's a flagship campus. But even in the approach here, it seems that we are highlighting, if you will, the fact that this current structure seems to to cast aside those campuses. So I guess I just want to, I guess, get the idea of how this identity comes into play when these other entities are so distinct.
George, I think that was you who made that point. Do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, let's, let's, I guess I'm unmuted. Wow. The, thanks for the question. I think there are a couple of dimensions in the answer. The first is, yes, they do have their own personalities and identities, their own footprints within their communities. But one thing that we heard from many of them is that they actually appreciated now being part of something that they consider to be an overall identity. The identity of LSU, the fact that they all now have the same colors, for example, which they didn't have before. It doesn't necessarily take away the distinctiveness that they have. What it does, though, is to give them a way of integrating with one another and a way of identifying that integration. The services that are beginning to be performed on behalf of foundations and other things have not yet reached all the way across the state, but I suspect could well do so. And do so without undermining the individual identities or the individual personalities, if you will, of those foundations or of those entities, campuses. That the issue here really is more one of a unitary strategy and the, the strength of presidential leadership. And I think that's the distinction that, that you began to draw in 2013, the, the changes you began to make at that point in time. And the question is, you know, and, and many of those things have borne fruit. We encountered very few people who wanted to go back to the way things were prior to 2013. And in part because they kind of liked the services, many of them. In part because they didn't like the, the combative-ness of the old system. And in part because what happened simultaneously is that the president's office changed its attitude to be much more facilitative rather than gatekeeping. And when people talk about not wanting to go back to the old ways, in part they're talking about services, but in part they're also talking about attitudes. So I don't know if that helps, but those are some, some thoughts I would have.
Can you, can you ask me, and this is just, I'm trying to get clarification, and maybe this is because I don't have a good understanding. But it seems weird to hear that the only way to have coordination system-wide is to have a president chancellor of the main campus. So in other words, does that, is that what you're saying? Another, because the, the sort of the benefits, you're saying, look, people love having that access. People love sharing. I just, isn't that, can't that exist anyway? I guess I'm, I'm having trouble tying that to the president chancellor.
Yeah, okay, let me be, let me try to be clear. Yes, you can have collaboration. And if you in fact provide the president with the authority and with the staffing to, to facilitate that collaboration, that can work. The question then is, and, and so either approach can be successful. The approach of having a single identity as a university allows you to have sort of a unitary set of things that, that focus, that create one strategy. In the alternative, you can have great collaboration. It's a little more difficult because you have semi-autonomous entities that must agree to collaborate. And that puts more pressure then on the president to facilitate and orchestrate that collaboration. But it can be done. And you can point to models around the country where it is done. I think what Carol said as she was describing the options is, yes, you can do that. It is a bit, it might be a bit more difficult, but you can do that.
Here's where I may be confused. Are you saying, and maybe it shifted. I understood that we were taking a look at whether or not to break out those two positions. This seems to have shifted a bit to a discussion about one system versus, you know, one institution versus a system of institutions. We don't have to regress in terms of one LSU in order to split that position back out. So which, or are you saying we have to?
You basically have three structural options. Regardless of whether you view it as one LSU or a unitary university or if you regard it as a system, you still have the same three options. So let's take a look at how each of those plays off in those three basic options. Lay aside the other options, which are just adding resources. You know, that's a separate set of decisions that you can make. You can keep the president as the head of LSU and as the head of the A and M campus. That's one approach. For that to work, though, in order to provide the collaboration that you just talked about, you may need additional support within the president's office to facilitate that collaboration. Because that's not what has been happening in the last few years consistently. I think the current president has really tried to re-engage in that arena. So that's, that's a conversation that you would need to have with him. The second alternative is to say, we will in fact recreate a chancellor's position at Baton Rouge campus. And you can do that. That, now, how do you then ensure that the progress that you have made is sustained? Part of that comes in the clarity that you provide for the roles and responsibilities. Part of it comes with the support that you provide within the president's office. And part of it really will be, how do you define then the role of the university writ large? Do you define it as an integrated, you know, strategy going forward? Or do you define it, and here's where we get to our distinction, as each of the entities, including the A and M campus, is trying to maximize itself and the president is trying to orchestrate it? You still have the choice to do one or the other. But you have to be, as, as both the supervisors and the president, very cognizant of what you're trying to achieve. And the third option is to say, okay, we are going to sort of create an invigorated provost position to oversee all of the academic interests of the Baton Rouge campus and to become a very visible symbol of that campus. And that's, that's the option used by a whole lot of other, or some other flagship universities where they have both a president, where they have a president, but they don't have a chancellor heading the campus. You can achieve the goals that you want regardless of which system, which structure you put in place. It's just how you define those roles and how, and when we came up with that distinction, it was more, we found it helpful in understanding then how those roles would operate, be operationalized in advancing the university. And that's why we put it in there, because we think that it helps clarify thinking. It's not that you have to make a distinction that, that abandoned certain things in favor of something else.
I guess that my, my question, and I promise is it, but here's my question, because I don't think, I think maybe you're misunderstanding. My question is this. Why can't we, or are you saying, why can't we keep all of those one LSU tightly-integrated president and, but add a chancellor for the main campus? Just like we still have the integration right now, but have a chancellor at the other campuses. Why is it an either/or? Why can't we, instead of having an invigorated provost, just have a chancellor, but keep everything else the same?
If that chancellor is to have the same authority as the chancellors of the other campuses over the administrative and academic units, then that is a change from what you have now. And then you, then you have the question of who then becomes the visible head of the campus or external community? If it is the chancellor, then the president no longer would be responsible for things like fundraising and athletics. The chancellor would. If, on the other hand, you say it should be the president, which some people have said, then how do you say to the chancellor, you're responsible for administration and academics and everything else? I mean, it's, it's a question of what you view as, what is the role of a chancellor? Now, if you can define the role of the A and M chancellor as being different from the roles of the other chancellors and more limited. I mean, you, you can sort of call the position anything you want. We used provost because that's what's used in other universities. You could come up with an entirely different name that would work for you. But if you use chancellor, then I guess the, the limitation I was laboring under was if you're going to use chancellor, then the chancellor of each campus has to have the same kind of authorities. But maybe you don't have to do it that way. But that is the way that we were thinking.
In terms of the kind of signals you send. And if you keep the president and the head of the A and M campus as the same individual, you are sending a signal about being a more integrated institution. If you move to the chancellor position, you are sending a signal about being a, a system, which is fine. It both can work effectively and do work effectively across the nation. But you're creating different kinds of perceptions about what your core purpose is.
And I would simply add that, yes, the system can have many integrated shared services. Many systems do have ease of transfer. There are many things that, that LSU, a system, could do that don't abandon many of the advances and integration that has taken place since 2013. We're just saying, I think that, that the possibility of some of them rolling back, maybe not being accelerated, would be the case if LSU hired a chancellor and became more of a traditional university system than it is as a, as a single integrated university.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Armentor.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to thank our consultants for a lot of good work. I have a curiosity and a question about what's been described by them as a major benefit that's been lacking. And it's founded in the phrase collaborative research across all LSU entities. I'd like you to define that, that term collaborative research amongst all the entities and give me examples of what you're describing and defining.
I think that the example that people used, and you're actually now are starting it under, under President Gallagher, is the pursuit of designation of a National Cancer Institute by NIH. It would require collaboration from the health science universities and the Baton Rouge science departments and perhaps others in order to actually reach the kind of scale and critical mass that NIH normally would anticipate. That sort of thing now is getting underway with the president's leadership. But that's the kind of collaborative research that we had in mind. What we were, what we were describing is a, what we heard in the interviews. And what we were describing was essentially what people were telling us had been the case for the last six or seven years. So part of this may in fact be the focus that was placed by the, the former president on education and instruction and not on research, which is, which is the complaint that we heard over and over again.
Okay. Those are all that I have for now, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman? I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Armentor. Mr. Blossman? Okay. Mr. Brazel?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, I want to thank you all for all the work that y'all put in through this and taking the time to do this. I, I noticed that in your first option, you talked about maintaining student success. How does that correlate with each of the other options? Do you see if we went to a president chancellor system or one of the other options? Does the student success portion, does that still carry over in each? Or would you see a potential regression from what we have now?
We would see it as something that you would clearly want to sustain and build on. It's a significant achievement. What we're pointing out is that your former president put a focus on that, which, which was a very productive focus, as you can see the achievements. But many people believe it was to the detriment of putting a focus on the, on the collaborative research. As long as you establish expectations that it is to continue and then you hold your various executives accountable for achieving those expectations, regardless of the model you pick, you should be able to sustain it. But there was a lot of concern that expressed that the job, as presently defined, is too big for one person. So if you thought about, for example, some additional resources in the president's office to lead areas like research, you could imagine that the likelihood of losing your momentum is, is less likely because you would have more people around the president focused on some of the other things. And that momentum could be sustained. But that would be up to you as a board of supervisors in terms of setting forth expectations regardless of the option you choose.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Mr. Brown?
I too want to thank each of you. And I've enjoyed meeting you in our prior meeting. And your work here is very thought-provoking. And I know you have lots of experience to bring, so thank you. I guess the, you know, the big issue with me is I'd like to know, I'd like to have a little further discussion or clarification on how, how would we going forward be the best scenario to have the oversight and the, and the coordination? And I appreciate what you said, Lynn, about the Penn State system and having the same coursework that would be interchangeable and so forth. I think that'd be good to explore ours. But basically, we have two different operations of them. So one of them is a traditional university education with the research that's associated with that. That'd be the campuses, A and M and the other campuses. Then we have the health science centers, teaching hospitals, and the research, the medical research that goes along with those. And I really appreciate what Tom is doing with, with collaboration. I think that during this time, especially with the coronavirus, it would be, it's a great opportunity for us to work together with our different medical institutions and even science centers on our A and M campus to develop responses to that. But I'm not, I don't see a clear pathway to it's certainly clear how we, to me, how we could combine the educational one LSU for all of our campuses and A and M, where they work closely together, share services and collaborate. But on the medical area with our research centers and our health sciences, I don't see how that research person, that we'd be over that, would, don't see their role with medical schools. And if we had a vice president or, or executive or even a chancellor, whatever we want to call it, that would be over all of the medical institutions that we have, would that person report to the president? Or would that person report directly to the board? I see that as such a different function from everything else and educational-wise it would be. And I think they really need to strengthen that in whatever we do going forward. And the chancellors of the medical schools would, I'm sure they would still like to report to the president. So if we have someone in between them, what's the? So if we have someone in between them, uh, what's the, you know, what's the scenario that we could, uh, consider?
It's certainly possible, uh, for the chancellors of the health sciences centers to continue to report to the president. While at the same time, having a senior staff person in the president's office that's responsible for drawing them together around major, uh, collaborative research projects. That person would clearly have to have the president's ear in terms of how well the heads of those entities, Pennington Health Sciences Center and so forth, are working together around some common goals. But at the end of the day, they could be reporting to the president and the president could have that oversight responsibility. It, it's a matter of leading by influence when you have someone in a staff role like that and you can provide them with tools, uh, that enable the collaboration. Some incentive funds, for example, uh, might be very helpful. And they could actually be helpful at individual campuses as well. But left to their own devices, uh, campus heads will pursue goals that they think are important for their campus. They want their campus to shine. So this provides an opportunity for someone in the president's office to show that, um, that together they can do things that none of them can do by themselves and, and help them see how the pieces and parts can be put together to create that something that is much bigger than any of them can do on their own. And there are parts here, uh, because you've got the health sciences centers, you've got Pennington, and then you've got the basic science departments as well. And in some cases, maybe even engineering or other academic units, depending on what the collaboration is all about.
Would that individual or position oversee the teaching aspects of the medical schools too, or are they strictly being research?
It, it, it would depend on how the position's defined. We saw primarily research collaboration because that's the area that was pointed out to us as most in need of more leadership and oversight.
The other question is, do you have an example of, of more and more universities? And, and I think it's great for LSU to have the, have this, uh, have the medical schools and the teaching hospital and research. Um, and I certainly think that helps strengthen all of our, you know, our system. Uh, we, our, we, our, uh, colleges, universities feed those for doctors and so forth and those positions. So it's great working together. And we have, do you have examples of very successful, uh, operations for other universities that would be similar to ours and, and working under one, uh, one president or a, uh, a president chancellor situation? Do you have some examples to share with us? You don't have to do it today, but if you could provide that at some point.
George, you want to take that one?
Yes, we, we looked at, uh, a, a large number actually of, of universities around the country. When you were asking the question, I was thinking of the, the two health science centers. They have one in New Orleans and one in, in Shreveport. And I'm trying to think of anybody who has that particular kind of division. And I, I couldn't think of one offhand. That's why I was, uh, uh, hesitating for a sec. But if you look at the, uh, at the various institutions which we considered, uh, they all have medical schools. They all have, uh, a flagship campus. They all have multiple other campuses. Uh, some of them are within systems and some of them are unified universities. Even within the Southeastern Conference, and we looked at, at all 14 schools there. Um, the, your structure where the head of the university is also the head of the flagship campus is also shared by Auburn in South Carolina. But most of the others are system campuses. You know, they're, they're a flagship within a system like, uh, Gainesville and, and the University of Florida or, or Athens and the University System of Georgia. So, you know, we can look at all kinds of different alternatives and they, and they all seem to work. I mean, in one way or another, and they all seem to have problems in one way or another. So, yeah, there, there are a variety. We look most at, uh, universities like Washington, Indiana, Minnesota, Hawaii, that have thought about these things more recently or thinking about them now, in case of Washington State. Uh, so, uh, but this is something that, that you can point to successful models, uh, yet of both systems and of integrated, uh, universities, uh, in various parts of the country.
That's all I have now. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Shadlane.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and, and thank you to the AGB team for all of your work. And, and Rich, I guess you were the, I think you were the only one that was on the 2012 project, weren't you?
That's right. That's right. Yes, yes.
So here, here, we're back again, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I was struck, a couple of things. I was struck by the, the comment that Carol said that came up often of don't return. Uh, please don't return to the old ways. And, and it just reminded me that there was back in 2012, a, a very good reason for us to engage and to, to look on making some changes. Uh, and, you know, there were challenges then. There are challenges now. I remember the conversation, Rich, I think you said it back in 2012, that there is no perfect structure. Uh, and, and so, but as I reflect, I think our goal back then was to create a more focused, unified, one LSU model to eliminate overhead and duplicative efforts, uh, focus more spending in the classroom and less on administrative functions. And it sounds to me, and looking at what y'all are saying, that you would agree that a lot of that has indeed been accomplished. Uh, and, and again, not that everything's perfect and certainly that research needs more focus. But my question would be this, can you, can you maybe give us a little more perspective on kind of student outcome progress? And if we're, if we're saying that one of our, uh, certainly our key stakeholders are students, talk a little bit about how LSU has performed in that area over the past few years compared to our peers, both in terms of student performance and efficiency of dollars in the classrooms. If you could maybe give us a little bit of, of perspective on that subject, please.
Well, as we, uh, mentioned, even when we were there in, in March, when we actually could see one another, uh, uh, LSU has had signal success in that regard. You, you've increased enrollment at a time when many, uh, universities, public universities have not. You've increased retention at a time when many have not. You've increased graduation at a time when many have not. And you've, you've improved equity at a time when that's a challenge for many universities. You have done a remarkable job. Yesterday, uh, the organization I used to head, CIO, uh, released its annual, uh, report on, uh, appropriations and tuition and essentially finance in all the states. And if you were to look at that report, you, you would note that you have done this against a backdrop of being one of the 10 least funded systems, least funded universities in the country. In fact, I think of all the 50 states, you may have been 49th if you add together both appropriations and tuition, net tuition revenue per student. And this is last year's information. This is not what's going to happen with whatever happens to everybody with COVID-19. What that points out to me is that what you have focused on improving student success, and you have done it despite not having the level of resources that most states have. So you've been very successful. But it also sort of reinforces what Carol said earlier. That comes at a price, and that price is the collaborative research and the stagnation we heard about in research. Because you have gone through a difficult time in terms of the last 10 years of budgets. And you have now managed, you have managed to serve your students well. But you haven't managed to do everything else that you wanted to do as a flagship in, institution. But I have to give you a lot of credit for the success you have had with your students, particularly in light of now knowing as of yesterday, how poorly funded you have been in order to achieve that. So, you know, that's.
Thank you. I'm good, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Shadlane. Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones, do you have a question for the panel?
I think that my questions were answered, um, when Supervisor Williams, um, drilled down with, uh, Mr. George about, um, the chancellor position and how that would become, would make it difficult to maintain the one LSU. Um, but just to clarify, George, I believe I heard you say that if we were to have a chancellor of the A and M campus and if that person were to have the same roles and responsibilities as the, the chancellors of the other campuses, that that would then create overlap. Is that correct?
No, it needn't create overlap. It all depends on how you define the responsibilities and roles. But what it will do-
But as it is now, as it is now, are there, are the roles and responsibilities overlapping? If we were to give the same roles and responsibilities?
What, what you have now is a situation in which the president and the president's staff do things for the A and M campus, or you can argue that their staff do things for the president, uh, that are really, will wind up being the functions of the others. So certain of the things that are done right now by the Provost and Executive Vice President would have, would be campus related, but certain of them are also university wide. And so you'd have to make a segregation of those two if you had a chancellor for the campus, because that chancellor would want to have the same responsibilities as the other chancellors have with regard to academic programs. Similarly, with regard to administrative and financial issues, you've managed to, to combine a lot of those functions now between the president's office and the, and the Baton Rouge campus. That segregation probably also would need to occur so that it were clearer that, you know, which roles were, uh, sort of university wide or system wide and therefore within the president's office and which would remain or be in, uh, the A and M campus because they really are the things that other chancellors would oversee and therefore this chancellor would expect to oversee. So I think we're, you, you would have to divide a lot of what is, are currently combined responsibilities. Uh, but that again would, could be done, you could do it very clearly, but it would still have to be done.
Thank you. I think that's it for now.
Yeah, I would, I would only add, you know, you have the dynamic in LSU that maybe only three or four other states have. And that is the situation where the president's office, the flagship campus and the state capital are all co- like, co-located in the same city. And that really what George was saying about making, being very clear about responsibilities. If you didn't recreate the chancellor position, that dynamic of being in the capital city with a system office, president's office is next door to the, to the flagship campus, clarity of responsibilities is absolutely necessary so that there isn't conflict about who speaks for the university, who speaks for the system, who has primary responsibility to the legislative delegation for that region. It can, it can be a hornet's nest if, if clarity is not, uh, if, if, if responsibilities are not clear.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we've made some great progress as, as we've all pointed out. And we definitely like, would like to continue to build on that progress. So, I mean, I'd like to hear some, some evidence of some, some, some good examples of how, how we can move forward, some universities that are, are or ways that we can move forward, continuing to build on the success that we have, but then also like, also make sure that we're doing those research, making advances in research as well, that we're not leaving anything by the wayside. We want to build here. We don't want to go, we don't want to lose ground, that's for sure. So some help in that area would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, Mr. Mallett is not present, so I'll move to Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, do you have a question?
Uh, no questions, Madam Chairman. Just thank AGB team. My, my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have a couple of observations and, and, and perhaps questions. I'm sort of looking at this historically as I listen to the discussion from having been through the last round and also from having done this before over the years. One thing is clear, there is not a one size fits all in American higher education in terms of structure. We've had universities, uh, around the country that have, um, excelled under both structures. So obviously there's not a magic bullet in terms of structure. Here at LSU, we have had periods of tremendous prosperity and tremendous conflict under both structures. So the structure itself is not the magic fit. I think, um, one thing that I would, um, like to say for the record is that the observation by some that the job is too big for one woman or one man is to me simply ridiculous because I, I think the, the chair and CEO of every Fortune 500 company would disagree. I think Jamie Dimon would disagree and Jeff Bezos would disagree. And Tim Cook would disagree, thinking that running LSU is too much for one person. However, where we are, I think there's an interesting potential hybrid. And I, and I'm looking at things, I have to look at things historically since I've known every president since President Middleton and every chancellor we've ever had. And I can tell you, you have, uh, an interesting thing that has occurred. When we moved to this unified model that was part of the flagship coalition project, it was considered real reform in Louisiana. We cut a lot of costs. We caught a lot, cut a lot of bureaucratic headaches in the system office. Um, it didn't mean it was perfect, but interestingly, and I'm glad the question was brought up, the greatest achievements of diversity, entrance, admission standards and student performance and metrics from first generation students to the diversity of those graduating is interestingly come over these last seven or eight years. Now, I don't know if that was cause and effect or if that was a commitment of the individual. But I tend to believe right now that where we are is a unique moment. And we have had tremendous gains. And it seems that stability right now is one of the things we would like to achieve the most. We're in an incredibly disruptive period in American business and in American higher education. We do not have adequate staff at the campus level and at the system level. And I would submit that, first of all, we are a system. We're not an integrated university. There's too much variety and difference in role scope and mission among the various campuses. But I would remind everyone that the reason we went to this unified model was not to diminish the A and M campus, the flagship campus, but in fact to elevate it. And in many ways, I think we did, even though it on occasion feels to some faculty as if we didn't. Here's the problem when you have a separate chancellor. And I, and I, and I've been so close to so many of the chancellors over the years. But the stronger the chancellor, the greater the disconnect there is from the president. but the stronger the chancellor, the greater the disconnect there is from the president, and the greater tensions are created. The other issue that you have is universities are really like biological organisms. As you segment them, they begin to grow in ways that you would not ordinarily have imagined. LSU had a gruesome bureaucracy that had developed in the past. It, we had developed a toxic environment between the flagship campus and the president's office. And it even goes back to years and years before when you compare the personalities of presidents, personalities of the chancellors, and you get to the question of who does represent LSU in the fundraising landscape, in the political landscape, downtown at the Capitol. I just feel like, you know, the consultants are, obviously are not here to tell us what to do. It's, that's up to the wisdom of all of the very, very fine people that serve on this board. But in this disruptive environment we are in, I cannot imagine implementing another disruption at the level that this would cause. I think there is, and maybe well in this state, and maybe even sitting in that chair in this, in his office, there are people who can manage this enterprise in a unified president-chancellor model. The sheer issue of athletics management and all of that, when you begin to separate that out to a chancellor, a chancellor takes on a very different, very different role. When the chancellor is over athletics directly and not the president, the chancellor's more engaged downtown. Then you get into issues with the Board of Regents, and the chancellor and president can differ on matters that go before the Board of Regents. We've watched it over the decades just multiply. So I am, what I really enjoyed listening to the, the work of AGB was the fact that they were not attempting to draw conclusions, that there was one magic bullet and one answer. The one thing that I think everyone agrees on, whether we go to a president-chancellor model or where, whether we maintain stability of the current situation, and especially if we maintain the stability of the current situation in leadership, is that the president has needed more help for years. And as the chair negotiates and the search committee negotiates as part of this whole process with potential candidates for the presidency of LSU, I think we get the finest person if we get someone capable of leading and, and driving the whole, the integrated, the system. And I think the integration and the system go hand in hand, because LSU itself is a brand. It's not just a word that denotes a system or an integrated university, and it's a brand that relates to excellence in Louisiana. So what I, Madam Chair, I think one of the things that you go through this and do your analysis with the leadership team is, is the evaluation that a president alone cannot do this job. A president-chancellor combined, like we have done, has reduced a lot of bureaucracy, generated tremendous gains on student achievement and diversity. Well, what the president has not had and what has led to the, I think, a little bit of a false narrative that it's too big for one person, is the fact that the president does not have sufficient help. And I think, I think a system where, or a, an end product where you recruit, develop, nurture, and empower a phenomenal man or woman to be the president of the university and be the symbol of the flagship that was the origin of the LSU brand, is where we all gain the most. And especially in a time of utter and total catastrophe and disruption in higher education and in, and in the business and commercial landscape, right now, we need unity. And, and I feel like what AGB has told us is the unity can come from recruiting the right person with the right skill sets, leaving the chancellor and the presidency combined, but that what we must do is empower them by giving them the kind of staff and the kind of flexible, thinking, bright staff to add to the ones that we have now. So that's, that's my take. I, I thank AGB tremendously for their work. I, I think they have laid out all of the options. And as Blake indicated, I would urge us not to, in, to be looking at a disruptive approach that could create more bureaucracy and more infighting at a time where we have neither the resources nor the energy to apply there. Let's go find that man or that woman that could in fact lead this university. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Starnes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll thank all my fellow supervisors for their thoughtful comments. I'll start off by saying where I agree with Mr. Perry is that LSU is a system. And I think that when I look at the question, a recurring question that the consultants want to ask, I think it evidences a fundamental lack of understanding of what LSU is, what LSU, LSU's relationship to the state of Louisiana. And I would ask if they consulted the state constitution, which, when you look at how the system, the education, public education in Louisiana is said to be governed, clearly contemplates a system. And I don't think that's just semantics. I don't think that's just a word. I think it reflects the differences of the mission for LSU-E, from LSU-A&amp;M, from LSU-S, LSU-A, and not just the differences in mission, but the differences of the different roles each play in the local communities, which should be championed and celebrated. I think that we, the quickest way to not get buy-in statewide, to not get proper funding or attention from the legislature, is to take decision-making and autonomy away from Eunice, Alexandria, Shreveport, for example. LSU is a 64-parish endeavor. And I don't use words like stakeholders. In fact, I abhor it, because in Louisiana, every citizen here is part of what makes LSU great. We service through our ag extension programs, every parish. And LSU has provided phenomenal benefits to economy, to hope, to unity, to education of all of the citizens. I think that we have had some gains, some tremendous victories of the last several years, largely due to the outstanding faculty and students that we have. I, for one, think it was a mistake to combine the, the chancellor and the president's position. I wasn't a supervisor then. I can imagine, considering the tremendous challenges they faced, you know, from the budget, that that might have been something they felt they had to do. But I don't think it served us well. And I, I would caution any movement or any adjustment to what people think LSU is, if it means taking what is unique and special about our other institutions other than A&amp;M and making them just some small part of what decisions, of decisions that are made in Baton Rouge. Some, there are decisions that need to be made in Eunice, in Shreveport, in Alexandria, in New Orleans, and there are decisions that need to be made in Baton Rouge, too. And I, I would not want to see that. I think that would be a terrible mistake. I think that, where, I agree that the, one of the problems we've had in the system office in the, in UAB is staff member, staff. I've been told by people I respect who were, who were supervisors before me, that the 72 employees in that building was unwieldy, but I'm equally convinced that the 19 we have now is not enough. And that maybe some of the issues that we can address could be addressed by finding the right number between those two, to share duties. I also agree with Mr. Brown's assessment about a collaboration among our medical schools and our research efforts, and I support fully promoting that concept. Research is a tremendous function and focus point of LSU, and we need to support it, promote it in every way we can. And I'm excited about the idea of a collaboration between research at Pennington and other places, as well as with our medical schools. That's what, what I would, those would be my few comments. The question I would ask our consultants is, have you consulted Louisiana State Constitution where it clearly says, contemplates LSU being a system, not a one university? And I'll, I'll, I'll direct you to Article 8, Section 7, as well as Sections 6 and Section 1, which talk about the system, and also Section 14, where they create Tulane University of Louisiana as a, just a standalone university. So when our legislature, when our, when our constitutional convention, when they created these articles, they knew what they were doing, and they said, we want this to be a system, and we want that to be a standalone university. And I would just ask whether they consulted those articles.
Well, I know that, that Mr. Novak actually did consult with the Constitution, but let me answer the, the question a little bit differently, Supervisor Starnes, and that is, it is not our view, under any of the options, that any of the individual campuses or entities should lose the autonomy it currently enjoys, or that would not attempt to fulfill its mission. And I, I don't want there to be lack of clarity on that point. I don't think any of the options assumes that. And, and I don't want anyone under that misapprehension.
Okay.
I'll just, well, I'll, I'll take a look at the Constitution again. I did not catch that. And I'll see what it says and see how it affects the report. Happy you pointed it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Starnes. Mr. Woods, do you have a question?
Madam Chair, I, I don't have a question at this time, but I do want to thank you for your leadership on this matter. AGB and my colleagues on the board as well. I think we have a, a very, a unique opportunity here to enhance LSU's system, do a lot of good for our state based on the decision that we make, and just trust and pray that we move forward collectively and make the best decision for all concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Yarborough, do you have a question?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. You know, one of the problems with having your last name begin with a Y is that usually all the great questions are asked before they get to me. But in this case, I thought all the questions were really great. I'd like to thank Team AGB for all the work they've done. I see some familiar faces, and it's great to see you again. I go back to one of your beginning statements, and it was in reference to COVID-19, and how the very fact that we're handling, if you will, these unprecedented times, and how it would more than likely delay our actions going forward. I, I think those are very, that's a very true statement, very realistic statement. But I'm also thinking, could it also be an advantage for LSU? And I, I say that because during these unprecedented times, economically disruptive, unprecedented times, again, for industries throughout this entire country, are there individuals possibly who are rethinking their stage in life? Are they starting to consider doing something maybe more meaningful with their talent? I don't know. I think, well, time will tell. So I say all that only to ask this question. It's, it's a little off the subject, but I think we should consider it, at least hear your answers on it, because it could also shape structure. What are your thoughts on a non-academic president for LSU system entity going forward? Or would you be so bold to even answer that question? Or I would, I would like to know, and would that influence our structure going forward?
Well, I, I think any of us could, could take that. I'll start and let my colleagues add to it. What we heard, and it's important to understand what the larger community thinks about these issues as well, we heard that people feel very strongly that it should be an academic. They feel that if there are two positions, president and chancellor, that as long as the chancellor is an academic, the president may not need to be, although there's still a very clear preference for an academic. Obviously, if the, if the structure remains as is with the two combined, then the clear preference for those in your community would be for an academic. We have done a little research about what it's like in this COVID-19 environment to be searching for a leader for higher education. And our, our colleagues, not just in AGB search, but in other major higher education search firms, tell us that strong leaders are willing to take on big challenges, and that while some of the search procedures may not be able to be done in person, at least currently, that they're finding that strong people are willing to step up and, and are interested in embracing these really, really big challenges. Occasionally, they're finding that people who are in place and, and committed are unwilling to think about moving to another institution because they don't want to leave their current institution while it is coping with these challenges. But other than that, they've not seen major changes in the search landscape. If anything, they've seen strong people being even more interested to step up and deal with challenges. But to your basic question, the strong preference, at least among the hundred or so people that we talked to, is for an academic.
Thank you.
And if I might put a little color on that for a moment, the people with whom we spoke are the faculty, staff, students, administrators, and other supporters of Louisiana State University. By definition, most of them are within the academic structure of LSU. Their belief is that they want a leader who comes from an academic background. If, in particular, if there are two different positions, one of president and one of chancellor, they feel the chancellor of the campus should be someone with strong academic credentials. The president's role, if you look across the country, in those cases where the president is- in those cases where the President is also the head of the, the campus, most of the time, not all of the time, most of the time, that person has a strong academic background. In cases where there is a, an academic leader of the campus, regardless of whether you call it the Chancellor or the Provost, but an academic leader, clear academic leader of the campus, then there can be more variation in the background of whoever heads the overall organization. But the strong preference of faculty in particular generally will be to be led by someone who has experienced the same kinds of rigors in, in, within the academy that they have, so that that person can understand both the instruction and the research that they are conducting. So, you know, back, that just reenters Carol's point, I think, but does show what the variation is around the country.
Mr. Yarborough, at one time in my, when I was full-time employed with A G B, I was tracking the non-traditional executives who came into public higher education. And what George and Carol say is largely correct. In, in the case of many university systems, there was some movement for non-traditional CEOs to, to lead the system. We see this in Texas, three systems in Texas, a military leader, a former political leader, and I believe in even a second political leader in the, in Texas Tech, Texas A and M, and the University of Texas. University of Alaska has hired somebody from the military. University of Maine for the system head, again, there's a separate chancellor for the flagship, but the University of Maine has hired a former governor to lead that university. Purdue University has a former governor, Mitch Daniels. There were several. But again, that does go against what, even in a system position, that, as George and Carol noted, the preference of the faculty, certainly the faculty in the search committees, is to have an academic.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yarborough. At this time, I have room for a follow-up question from any supervisor. I'm going to go down the roll and give everyone the opportunity. Again, this is for a question. I'm being, trying to be very cognizant of time. If you have anything follow-up on your topic or someone else's topic, go ahead. If you choose to pass, just, if you'll come on the audio and let me know that you don't have a follow-up question, I would appreciate it, so we can move on in the essence of time. So with that, I will go back up to Mr. Dampf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We talk a lot about the old system versus the new system being the present system. Picking up on something, and I think Mr. Williams was somewhat making references to this, that the key is to find a better system and to find an appropriate system, take the best from the old and the best from the new. I, I hear about the, the, the problem being with the old system, somewhat bureaucratic overlap and bureaucratic expense. I know is a dirty word in, in higher education because it takes you away from educating students, which is our mission. We also hear about the problem being, if you have a strong Chancellor and a, and a President, you have competition and, and who's the power at the university? It is, aren't the, both of those things really, as much as anything, a leadership issue? I mean, if you have the right President and the right Chancellor, and they're the right kind of leaders, wouldn't that go a long way to solving these kinds of problems?
Absolutely. And I think that, that we each have said that at one time or another in this presentation, that leadership matters, and that any structure can work if the roles and responsibilities are clearly defined, and you have leaders in those, in those roles who both understand their own responsibilities, those of the others in, in leadership roles, and who then adhere to those. And so it is a leadership question. You're absolutely right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dampf. Mr. Williams, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Thank you. And I guess, I don't know if I can be seen. My follow-up question is, it's essentially what Robert was saying. I thought, and perhaps the issue has, has been framed, or maybe I'm misunderstanding what the objective was going to be here of, of this analysis, because Robert's right. I don't think we wanted a debate of, was it better before or is it better now? Nobody wants to go backwards. Certainly, there are things that have been proved. Certainly, there are things we are doing well that we don't want to throw away. However, if we have an organization where the other campuses feel neglected because they don't have a Chancellor, and then the main campus feels neglected, that they don't have a Chancellor, and there are some things that we think we can improve upon, what is the recommendation? I guess I was looking for a recommendation where A G B talks to everyone, talks to the stakeholders, talks to the supervisors, comes back and says, okay, we've heard you, we, we hear the problems, we hear the benefits. Here's a solution, or here are, yeah, here's a solution that takes into consideration everything you're saying. Or here is the option that fits more closely with what you're trying to do. Is it putting a Chancellor back, but putting the right structure in place so that we don't have the, the problems that, that Robert was talking about? So I guess I wasn't looking for so much of a, was it better before, was it better now? And I hear y'all have given us these five options and identified the issues, but the next step seems to be, y'all are the experts. You've heard the priorities, you've heard the concerns. What are you saying should happen to, to fit that?
Well, we're, we're not in, in the role of making a recommendation, but it, I think it is pretty clear that we have said that as long as the roles of the leaders are clear and do not conflict, to do not in themselves create a conflict, and as long as you don't go back to the old bureaucratic ways that you had. In other words, maintain certain things that you, you have changed. And if you were to consider making investments in research and in the President's staff for collaborative research and other things, you can make either structure work with those other things that I mentioned. You have that opportunity.
And if you're asking, did we hear from the hundred or so people that we talked with a very, very clear preference? We did not. Many people raised issues, suggested opportunities, but there's not a preponderance of evidence that your community wants one particular option.
Now you're speaking language, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Is that good? Is that good? Can I, are you ready for me to move?
Yeah, I'm fine. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Mr. Armentor.
I do not have any further questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blossman has indicated to the Chair he has no further questions, so I will move to Mr. Brazel.
I have no further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Moving to Mr. Brown, do you have a follow-up or any further question?
Okay, I think I'm, I think I'm on that. Thank you.
Yes, I can hear you.
Well, it's been real interesting, really informative, and I really appreciate all the comments from our board and Madam Chair. Well, when we, when the board comes together on a, on a direction, will your group provide us, with all the experience you have, a template for, you know, how we would organize this, whatever new structure we have, and also some guidelines on procedures and so forth? Would you, would you do that as part of your work for us now, or, or, and I guess my other question is, what else are you going to do for us with your, with this study we hired you for?
We will be submitting a report, which I think is due next Friday, that essentially lays out our process, our interview findings, explores the options, and lays out the considerations we think that, that you should, should address. We hadn't really thought about coming up with, with a template. I mean, within the narrative of each option is a sort of a notation as to the kinds of, say, additional positions, if required, that you would, would, would need to consider within that option. But beyond that, we have not contemplated doing, doing other things.
Thank you, yours. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Shadeline?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for doing this. I appreciate your diligence and thoughtfulness as we, as we think through this. And mine is not so much as a question, but I guess a, an observation. It would be interesting if anybody at A G B would, would add to it or correct me in, in thinking. But kind of as Stephen Perry mentioned earlier, the, the most disruptive thing would be if we go to a President-Chancellor role. And as I think about that, it would seem to me that if we were going to go down that path, that our first step would be hiring a President, because I think that new President would have to be very involved in the hiring process of the Chancellor, or else, I, I, it, it's hard for me to imagine how you would search for both at the same time. So you would have to, in my mind, step one, hire the President, and let him lead the effort of the search for the Chancellor, so that those authorities are clearly laid out from the start in terms of the President, the Chancellor's role. And, and so unless I'm wrong, and you would think there's a different way to handle it, then it would seem, going back to some of the comments and, and some of the questions of, you know, is it really fair to judge the current structure by only one candidate? Then I guess the end of my, my, my point is, it would seem like if we thought we wanted to go down the role of splitting it out, you hire the President, you let him assess whether the job is, can be done by that one person, and you can still always come back later and add a Chancellor if you want to do that. So that's more observations than, than a question, and if anybody at A G B would care to opine on that, I would welcome it. If not, that's all I have to say.
I think I'll, I'll agree that the President's search needs to come first. Sorry, George.
Yeah, and that's in fact what we do say in the report, is the President needs to be responsible, and, and the Chancellor needs to understand that, and the best way to do that is to have the President in charge of the Chancellor's search.
Yeah, I would only add, we did, like, hear from a couple of other people who had the same scenario that you've just laid out, that, that hire the President, then make a determination if a Chancellor should be hired, and if so, let the President do that hiring.
Fit for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Jones has indicated she has no further questions. So, Mr. Moore, I'll give you the opportunity. I know you didn't have any in the beginning, but.
No, 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 no further questions, other than I agree with the observation that I, I think, I think the hiring of the President should come first, and that, that we ought to go out to try to solicit the most qualified individual out there, and the Presidency ought to come first. And then if, if the Board decides to go in the direction of the Chancellor position, have, have the input of the incoming President. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perry, do you have any follow-up?
Madam Chair, thank you so much for your leadership and for bringing A G B in on this, and I just echo what Mr. Shadeline just said, and Mr. Moore, I, my tendency would be to stay the course for a couple of years with a President's search on being accomplished, and then having the President lead that, should the Board in its wisdom decide to go a different direction, giving us a, a more stable time to be able to look at that. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Starnes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I, I also want to thank you for having this meeting, and thank you for your leadership. I would like to join with Mr. Dampf and Mr. Williams's comments regarding something that was alluded to in the report, but I don't think it was, it's such a major factor, I don't think it was given the proper light, and that is, under the combined position, what we have is seven institutions who think that the Pres, don't, don't feel like they have a President because they spend all their time being the Chancellor at A and M, and then the largest of our institutions at A and M, the only one without a full-time Chancellor. And that, to me, is not reconcilable with one position. And I, I realize that since A G B recommended combining the position in 2013, they may have some ownership interest in defending it, but I, I think that we need to clearly define what we want out of our President. And that, that means dealing with the Louisiana Legislature and the administration and the Board of Regents, and all sixty-four parishes, and the agricultural interest and the research interest that I feel have been, those entities may have felt neglected when the person with the combined position, they felt was always being the Chancellor at A and M. So we have to do all of those things. We have to move all of those things. And I think going forward, having two positions is, is the better way. But I thank you for allowing me to comment, Madam Chair. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Starnes.
Mary, can I make, can I one quick follow-up? In, in A G B's defense, I, I think, I don't think they made a recommendation in 2012, just like they're not making a recommendation today, just a point of clarification.
That is, that is correct.
Mr. Woods?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Yarborough?
No further questions, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. As we're nearing the conclusion, I want to add a few of my own comments. First, I want to thank A G B for their work on this process, and I want to thank our staff. The board staff had a big heavy lift to help us get this study done, and that's just what this is. This is a study that the Board of Supervisors, in my opinion, the Chair's opinion, needed to look at the positives and the negatives of all the things that aren't going on at LSU. I want to thank all the supervisors who've participated, offered your thoughts, offered your, the background you have in our business community, those of you who have extensive experience serving at the board level, and those who bring a fresh perspective to this question. Again, I want to thank everyone who participated. We called on students, we called on faculty, we called on staff, we called on representatives from every entity of LSU, and everyone was willing to participate because, again, they all believe in the mission of LSU. It was my goal in this exercise for us all to take the opportunity to do the exact thing that we expect our faculty and students to do every day. They may walk in a classroom thinking they know the subject matter or they know the answer. But the hallmark of education is being willing to walk in that classroom or that laboratory right now, those hospital rooms, and look at all the things you don't know and use the experience and the knowledge that you do know and that which you have at your disposal. We are 16 individuals on this board, business leaders and students, people who have served on the board for many years, and some of us who have been here for two or three years. Some of us who were at LSU recently, and some of us who were at LSU a long time ago, and some who have not had the opportunity to attend LSU, but love LSU nonetheless. We have to push this question beyond our own experiences. As we currently are pushing through the greatest disruption we've seen probably since the Great Depression or any world war. Life is not as it was for us back in January. And we don't know when it will return to the life we knew before. This requires us to roll up our sleeves and dig deep. We are charged with looking for the next leader of an LSU that is leading in healthcare, leading in education, asking students to learn from home, asking professors to move their teaching from their classroom to their living room. The Board has to do the same thing. And it was important for us to have the opportunity to hear from all the constituencies that make up this great land, space, and sea grant institution. Again, I want to thank everyone for their participation, for the impressive questions today, for the deep discussion we've begun. I want to thank our staff, and I want to thank someone who hasn't been named today, but who continues to lead us through this extraordinary time, interim President Tom Gallagher. He is doing an extraordinary job under extraordinary circumstances. At this time, with no further questions and no further business, I will announce our regular, next, our next scheduled regular board meeting is May 22nd, 2020, in Baton Rouge. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Again, thank you all for your time and participation today. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.